Push my button. Everybody ready? Everybody's here? Okay, here we go. Well, good evening. And I will call this regular scheduled meeting of the Bemidji School Board to order. And it is November 21st, 2022 at 6:30 PM. And we'll start our meeting with the approval of the agenda. And we have one item that we are going to remove from the agenda. And that is under Equitable Student Achievement, Letter C. First reading of Revised SPR 400-90-11 Instruction Credit for Learning. So that item will be removed from our agenda for this evening and be part of a future agenda. So I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda with that removal.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We have an agenda. Any requests to remove a topic from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, hearing done. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda for this evening under special topics. And I'll turn that over to Superintendent Olson.
Thank you. Tonight, we are going to be joined by Gail Gilman from MSBA to outline the steps for strategic planning. As we are looking, I know the board was very interested in looking forward to strategic planning. We are planning on doing that this spring. So with that being said, we have Gail Gilman joining us via Google Meet. Okay, well, we're going to move right on to the second topic. We'll wait till Gail joins us. The second topic is to, actually, Dr. Stannick will be here to present to us about the five-period day and the implications there as we move from a four-period day to a five-period day at the high school. So, Dr. Stannick, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm just coming tonight to provide an update on our progress with implementing and getting ready to register for a five-period day next year. There should be a document that everyone was provided to reference. If you'll see, the first thing you see is a timeline for implementation. And the steps that are highlighted in green are the steps that we've completed for this year thus far. From there, the steps that are not highlighted are the pieces that we still have to put together to be ready for next August. I really have to give a thank you to our guidance counselors, especially Ms. Jen Vogi, who has spearheaded the transition of our old registration materials and then helping to push through with our restructuring committee all of the pieces that we need to prepare for registration. But if you notice, all of the activities that we have with that and outside of that are listed there. Then I'll move along with, as far as our planning goes, you'll see the instructional credit for learning is listed after that. That was removed from the agenda. That is an update. We're going to update that policy to discuss the just language that will talk about earning credit, transferring credit and such, and that editing is not quite ready. But we will have another policy that is reviewed that talks about our transition and graduation requirements tonight. And so I thought it poignant to talk a little bit about graduation. When we looked at our programming that we have within the district, BHS will be transitioning to a five-period day. And what that does is that changes opportunities for credit. Excuse me. So what we had to consider are what are our state and local requirements? And then what are our local expectations? Such as, what do we get in homeroom? And homeroom has been a vital piece of what we've done for many years. And so we had to include that into our planning. And then we also had to look at, what does the state expect of us as far as specifics of health and PE, science, social studies, all of those pieces to make sure that we hit all of those requirements, but also structure it so that our students have opportunity within that new five-period day. With that being said, in the new policy that you'll review tonight, talks about adding a half-credit to our graduation requirements with the class of 2027. And with that, that is personal finance. And that is to include many of those things that we teach in homeroom that our students need for coping in everyday life. It checks off a few things, needs for the students, but also there are expectations for college and career readiness that would be included within that class. So we are meeting expectations of our World's Best Workforce Report. We are meeting the needs of our students. And we're incorporating it into a model in which we can deliver that for credit. So that is going to be a piece that's different with the class of 2027. But if you look at, the first thing we want to talk about are our diplomas. Traditionally, we have had a 28 out of 32, 32 opportunities for credit with the high school diploma. That's been the expectation for BHS. We also had, I believe, seven years ago, it would have been right before I arrived at BHS, the board had passed to have a reduced diploma of 24 credits. With our transition, especially during our transition period, to continue to have that diploma, it's not applicable. So if you notice in the chart, the one thing we would like to do is discontinue that diploma. So when we get further down and look at credits, you'll see that this does not change the structure. We were able to, for our alternative programs, that would include our Bemidji AEC, Lumberjack High School, Lakeside Learning, and First City Student Center, which helps our transition become more smoothly. So we're not asking to raise credits or change the structure within any program, within any program except Bemidji High School. Are there questions thus far? That's a lot that I've thrown at you.
A couple of things. The personal finance class, is that something that can be considered a math credit?
That actually was a question posed, and we're looking at how we can use that at this time. That is not something normally that is evaluated for a math credit. But there have been some schools that have done that, but we have to look at how we integrate the curriculum.
And then the next question is, with discontinuing the lower credit requirements for graduation, how would we anticipate that affecting our grad rates?
It will not impact our grad rates. We have the ability to waive everything up to the state and local requirements, even the local requirements. The state requirements are what we can't waive. With our transition, we're going to have to evaluate each year, every student until we hit the class of 2027. So they'll have to be evaluated individually. And we'll have to look at, if it's a transfer student, if it's a student that moved programs, not necessarily credits, but did they meet the instructional outcomes? Meaning, did they get a math class with statistics in it? Did they get a health class? We'll have to be able to check that off, much like we always do in our alternative programs. We go by credit versus, actually, we go by the class versus the credit.
And then my last question at this point is, not that I want to go to the minimum, but what is the state minimum for a five-credit day? Five-period day?
The state minimum is 21 and a half, but there are some caveats with that within any structure, depending on if I were a 712 school, or if I'm, much like us, 912. When you look at that, at every level, you have to offer health and PE. And so if you notice, if you look at Bemidji Alternative Education Center, First City, it says 22 and a half. That extra credit that we passed when we lowered those programs two years ago to the program minimum, that's where that extra, instead of 21 and a half, it's 22 and a half. But that means that they are meeting the minimum required credits.
Thank you.
Is there, do we offer any classes that are pass/fail?
We do offer pass/fail classes to, if it's written within a student's IEP, yes. Right now, we are on a grading scale of 90, 80, 70, 60, unless it's a weighted grade.
So this new addition would be a graded class and not a pass/fail?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I'm going to assume we got quiet. I'm going to assume, from my background in elementary, at the wait time, there was no questions. We're moving to the diploma transition piece. When we look at the student, a student only gets four years of education. It doesn't get any larger, it doesn't get any smaller with our transition to a five-period day. It is the same amount of minutes, just segmented differently from a four-period day to a five-period day. So we looked at the instructional outcomes of how much do we expect students to accomplish within their high school career? And so we use the metric, right now, we're on a 28 out of 32 model. And that comes out to, if you do the division, it's an 87.5% credit attainment. Meaning, they have to pass 87.5 of their credits or expectations for us to receive a diploma. With this transition, not saying that we're not going to evaluate that throughout the first year, make tweaks and changes and adjust as needed. But with that model in mind, we looked at, what can we do to not punish students for opportunities they won't have? So if you look at the chart below the transition program, and you'll see that the class of 2024, because of their opportunities for credits, you'll see eight plus eight plus eight plus 10. Next year, they'll have an opportunity to earn 10 credits. But the first three years of their education, they had an opportunity to earn eight times three, 24. So they'll have an opportunity for 34, and I think I did the, yeah. When it comes out, so it's 34 that we expect. So there's a typo, I noticed, I just noticed that. It says 29 out of 35, it should be 29, 30, 29 out of 34. I apologize. I'll have to fix that. You see that progression with the class of 25, 26, and 2027. The class of 2027 would be the first class that has the opportunity for 40 credits. And with that 87.5 metric, they would have to earn 35 out of 40 credits. With that model, to fit in all of our logistical pieces, Lumberjack High School and all the alternative programs will not have to change structure. Lumberjack will, instead of using the first two periods as they do now, will use the first three periods to increase instruction in their core areas. So they get four cores right now in the morning. They will do that for our first three periods at BHS. And then join our electives fourth and fifth period. That works out very well for their model. They will, we will not change the credit expectation for Lumberjack High School AEC or the other programs. If you look down, then you can see, and we are talking now when we transition, about communicating our actual structure. You can see that Bemidji High School schedule on there on paper. We have not published that or put that out yet. When I get further along, we'll talk about communication. But that is how it fits together. And as we've given updates in the past, we've done everything from map how hard it is to get from one end of the building to the other within our passing times, how we can serve lunch. The biggest shift we're going to see is our starting time is 8:05. Our ending time is 3:05, as it always has been. 8:05 is a 14-minute shift for us to go backwards. So the part of communicating with that with our families is letting them know that 14 minutes earlier may be a big shift for people dropping off students and getting to and from work and that kind of thing. So that's going to be a big part of our communication, is saying, we're starting earlier. It does work with transportation, and it does work within our teacher's contract. Questions so far? So I've listed out, if you look at the Lumberjack credit structure, as I've said, it doesn't change. We are looking at, now, we are at the stage of preparing for registration, which is quite an undertaking. We have our registration materials being printed, well, finalized editing. If you notice, the green that we highlighted at the beginning, we are on schedule to be ready to register for the five-period day and be ready in August. So that's quite a big step for us. We will be coming up with a communications plan. And in February will be our first engagement with the community on January 31st and February 2nd. Our teachers will have breakout sessions at the high school and invite the community and to teach them everything from what happens with AP and college and high school. Doesn't change it. Will we still have curling? Yes. How do I register for a five-period day? What time do we have to be there? What's the physical structure? All of those things, we're going to try and communicate over and over and make sure that we communicate and instruct as much as we can so that nobody's caught off guard. Now, every plan could have more. So if you have questions, please reach out, ask them. Our first step is we will be teaching the staff and answering any questions that our staff has and the district in the month of December, so that we are ready for the end of January and the beginning of February. We are looking at, what are some of our concerns? We still have to plan for teacher supervision, or school supervision. We do not have the 30-minute duty that we once had to assign 30-minute duties to teachers. So one of our biggest obstacles are a very full lunchroom or a commons area. So we have to accommodate for that in some of our supervision areas. So that is something we're still developing. Looking at, adding this class will take us a little extra time when we register and balancing the schedule. On any normal year, we put out our grid, we develop our grid, we work with all of our departments. Then we do a pseudo-schedule to see where those course requests balance. It's about a five-month process, so we can anticipate that this is going to be a little bit of work. Any questions?
I'm looking at the schedule, Jason, and I'm wondering how, I guess I'm not up to par on how long the transition is between classes now. Because I noticed what the transition time is between the classes and this schedule. And it seems pretty tight, but I-
It is very tight. Right now, we're at seven minutes, and we're moving down two minutes per transition. It's quite a tight schedule. It's doable. We actually, we tested it on several occasions, but it means that we have less opportunities in the hallways. And one thing we'll have to do is work with students to teach that that two minutes means a lot. If you want to talk a little bit, go to the bathroom, that kind of thing. You're really going to have to be timely in moving. The last thing I'll talk about is, the one, some of the benefits are increased opportunities for our students, increased elective choices in our high-interest areas. We should be able to reduce some class sizes by having so many added sections. And then we should be able to address some of our, some of our needs by saving costs or not having to utilize overloads anymore. And that is actually quite, would be quite a weight off our shoulders if we didn't, because having to implement overloads means that a teacher is teaching all day versus being able to teach and have some prep time. Any questions?
I, yeah, I just have one. Do you anticipate creating like a frequently asked question resource? Thank you.
Yes. We are starting with a Google Form out to our staff to see what, when we started discussing the development of our communications plan, I asked the people on the committee, what questions do you have about it? And they asked some questions I never would have thought of. So that developed into, starting with our staff, developing that so that when we are teaching it, we know what questions to address, regardless of how it might seem common sense, or it might not seem common sense. And then from there, continuing to develop that so that people can reference it. Our breakout sessions in, at the end of January and February, we intend to record them so that parents can watch them from home. The drawback to that is they won't be able to, we don't have the ability to show them live because so many pieces would be going on at once, but we will record them. And if you're not there live asking questions, it'll be difficult. So we do have to have an ability for people to continue to put out questions. And then we, if you notice on that schedule, we have several, several other opportunities to have information put out to our community. And we'll use that to keep developing and see where our holes are.
Yeah, thank you very much for pulling that together.
You're welcome.
Is there going to be a time, I noticed the parent communication, and you talked about staff communication. Is there going to be a time to pull the students together and really talk about that? Or are you going to include them in on the parent or the staff?
Yes. We will use some sections of our homeroom, our remaining homeroom times throughout the year, to teach next year's schedule.
And Jason, you already said this, but I just want to double-check. This in no way affects students' ability to earn college credit?
That is correct. It does not impact college and the high school, does not impact our AP courses. It does not impact curling, which is a very popular program with us. Actually, if there's one place that we benefit, we possibly will be able to add another section of curling per day during our, during the terms that we offer it. And then we'll still also be able to offer construction through our construction program. So we didn't have to get rid of anything, so to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to your whole staff and committee and people that have worked on this for quite some time to bring this to fruition. So we appreciate all the effort you put into this, Jason.
You're welcome. They do good work.
Yes, they do. And once again, it just shows all the opportunities that our school district offers for kids. So moving forward, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we're going to hear from Gail Gilman from MSBA about strategic planning. We do have her ready to go, so we're going to listen to what she has to say.
Chair Johnson, members of the board, and student representatives as well. And I just need to do a quick check, is the audio working okay? You can hear me okay? All right, great. Thank you for the thumbs up. So my name is Gail Gilman. I serve as Director of Strategic Planning and Board Leadership with Minnesota School Boards Association. And I certainly want to thank you for your membership in our association. It's an honor to serve you, and we look forward to working with you in strategic planning as well. Dr. Olson asked me to just provide a brief update on the strategic planning process. And then I'm going to turn it over to you, if you have questions, to do a little bit of a deeper dive in the process. So strategic planning is your visionary roadmap for the next three to five years. MSBA has been conducting and facilitating the development of strategic plans since 2015. And at this point, we are over 100 that we have facilitated. I personally have been in all corners of the state, and I have worked with school districts of all sizes and shapes. We also do strategic planning for a number of charter schools and ed consortiums, education districts, and service co-ops as well. So as we look at developing your next visionary roadmap, your strategic plan, a few things about our process. First of all, we consider it to be extremely inclusive because we will be inviting all of your stakeholders, students, middle school and high school, staff, licensed and non-licensed, your superintendent, your administrative team. Of course, all board members will be a part of the process, and also community members. So we will be reaching out to parents, guardians, and business owners, alumni, and other community members to participate in the process. It's also an opportunity to bring all values and voices to the table so that when we are finished with the project and the strategic plan has been developed, you as board members can be confident in knowing that you've given everyone an opportunity to participate. We start our process by gathering information at the beginning, which means internal and external surveys that will be shared with all stakeholder groups. And then we will move to a series of listening sessions. Again, listening sessions will be with each of your stakeholder groups. And depending upon your interest, we're also open to doing some special focus groups as well for the listening sessions. Once we've gathered that information, we embark on three strategic planning committee meetings. The committee is, again, made up of a cross-section of stakeholders. And the strategic planning committee varies from 20 to 25, up to, right now, I'm working with a school that has 45 on their strategic planning committee. So whatever size fits your needs is just fine with me. The strategic planning committee then will help revisit your current beliefs, mission. We also work on creating a vision statement, which in your previous strategic plan, you did, I didn't see evidence of that. So I did not have that in there. So we'll look at those. We will start identifying focus areas. And if your current focus areas seem to speak to the school community, we'll move forward and start looking at what the new goals and objectives are for your next strategic plan. One of the new pieces that I have added into the process is making sure that you as a board superintendent team are fully committed to that new strategic plan. So I do a final meeting with the board superintendent team at a special meeting of the board where we will review the process. We will look at that first draft of the plan on a page. And then I will incorporate the school board self-evaluation. And using that, we'll talk about the five standards of board leadership and how the strategic plan fits into the work that the board does. And so as I wrap up the work, I want the board, the superintendent, the, all the stakeholders to have embraced the process and feel like you're ready to move forward in making decisions based on that new strategic plan. And as I tell all boards, I never walk away from you. So in three months, if you want me to come back and do a quick revisit, six months, one year, if you want me to facilitate a review with the board and all the stakeholders, I'm more than happy to help in- I'm more than happy to help in that as well. So, we're always here for you. And then, one last nugget that I'll share before I open it up for questions, one of the things that I have created is a very extensive toolkit. So, in the process, of course, we need to lean on the superintendent or maybe designated administrators to help facilitate issue items on your end, sending out letters and things like that. So, I've created a toolkit that has news releases, postings for your website, letters of invitation, agendas, because all the strategic planning committee meetings will be subject to the open meeting law. So, the agendas, the posting notices, the adoption at the very end of the process, a news release at the end of the process also that says the new strategic plan has been adopted, all the links for the work that we do, and then anything else that your superintendent will need in the, in facilitating this. So, I'm going to catch my breath for a second and pause and see if you have any questions that I can respond to.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say I'm looking forward to commencing the process. So, thank you for participating.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Any other questions?
Would you give us an understanding of the process as far as a timeline? I know we had talked about this in the spring.
Correct. We're looking at starting the process in the spring. So, March is when we would look at getting the surveys out. And then we'd start the face-to-face meetings either late March or into April and have most of the process wrapped up by the end of the school year. We usually say our process is a 12 to 14 week process. And that means the beginning of the process is really just working with the superintendent in finalizing, superintendent and board in finalizing the two surveys and then starting with the promotions. And then, once we start the face-to-face, it's usually in every other week. So, listening sessions skip a week and then strat, plan, first planning meeting skip a week and so on and so forth. So, ends up about an eight-week process. Other questions?
I'm not hearing any other questions. Thank you so much, Gail, for joining us and going through. Is there any other things that the board should know about the strategic planning process or information we should be using to prepare?
I, I think we're good. I guess maybe one other comment is that your strategic planning committee members are advisory to you as a board. So, the final approval in this process will be a board decision. But of course, it's important to have all board members, student representatives be a part of the process so that you do have that total buy-in once, once we do finish with our work.
Okay. Thank you, Gail, and thanks for MSBA to always being there as our, our guidance through all of our processes. So, thank you.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to work with you. Thank you so much. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone, and we'll see you again soon.
Good.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right. Next item on our agenda is our student representative reports, Holly and Nick. And welcome, Nick, to our formal school board meeting. You've attended a couple of special school board meetings, but this is the first regular scheduled one on the third Monday. So, welcome. And Holly, good to see you again, too.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Nick Rodeo and I haven't introduced myself yet since this is my first one. So, I'll do that. I'm in 11th grade at the high school. I do soccer and tennis and then some activities in the, in the wintertime. Last week was the first week of our second term. The timing was changed a little bit because of our two-hour late start on that Friday. But transitioning was nice. So, that was, that was good. This week, we have a short week for Thanksgiving. And then, next weekend on December, we, December 3rd, we have our winter formal. Grand March is at 7:00 PM and then the theme will be glistening gala. So, those are my things. Thank you.
All right. Today, I'm just going to talk about some of the extracurricular things that have been happening at the high school. The BHS musical Little Shop of Horrors just wrapped up last week and they had a great performance. It was a great show and really showed the true talent of our students. The BHS bands and choir had their first concerts in the last few weeks. The orchestra will have their first concert on Tuesday, November 29th. I highly recommend attending. They're always fun to see what our students can put together. And the high school's winter sports and activities are starting up and we wish them all the best of luck. I've been to a few girls' hockey games so far and we are really looking at a great season. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is listening session review. Jeff and Ann?
Yeah, we had one person or one family come in. They wanted to talk about some, some busing issues. They were requesting that the bus route be reviewed and that pickup and drop-off be a bit nearer to their home than it currently is. The, the student drop-off and pickup is on a relatively busy corner, 55 miles an hour one way, 30 another. And there's some blind corners there they're a little bit concerned about. They brought in the student handbook. And in the student handbook, there's some things they pointed out regarding busing and where kids are supposed to be during inclement weather and things like that. And they pointed out that the, at least the, the busing handbook that they were looking at was, was like 20 years old as last time was reviewed. And they're asking that that be looked at and reviewed.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, donations. Superintendent Olson.
All right. Thank you. For donations, I want to highlight several donations. We have a very generous community. First of all, Knife River, $1,000 to the BHS Career Academies. Gloria Woodard, $600 to Solway Elementary. Sanford Health, $15,000 to the Angel Fund. And a total of $10,440 raised at Horse May for the purchase of two all-terrain wheelchairs. And that comes from several organizations. North Country Snowmobile Club, Horse May Elementary PTO, Garfield Lake Ice Racers Club, Bemidji Education Foundation, David Knutson, Sanford Health, Bemidji Sunrise Rotary Club, and Scott Pearson. So, I just want to thank all of those donors for your wonderful gifts. We appreciate that and thank you for supporting the Bemidji schools.
Thank you. Motion needed.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will echo what Superintendent Olson said. Community support for our schools is always appreciated and we just thank everybody for their support of our schools, our community. Couldn't do it without you. So, thank you. Next item on our agenda, under equitable student achievement is World's Best Workforce. Ms. Cardenuto.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair, Board Superintendent, and all stakeholders. Tonight, I will be sharing our annual World's Best Workforce Report summary. This report is required through legislation and is a document that illustrates how Bemidji area schools has executed the five required World's Best Workforce goals. MDE has identified five goal areas. The first one is all childrens are ready for school, all third graders can read at grade level, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, and all students are ready for career in college and all students graduate from high, from, from high school. Those are the five identified goals by MDE and legislation. Under the first goal, all students ready for school, Bemidji area schools have identified and created three goals. The first one is that students enrolled in pre-K programs will improve their foundational skills of the letter, letter knowledge so that 75% of the students will demonstrate acquisition of 10 or 26 uppercase letters. Last year, this goal was met. In the area mathematics in the pre-K program, they will improve their foundational skills of number requisition. So, 70% will recognize eight out of 10 numbers. That goal was also met. The third and final goal is the area that 100% of our classroom teachers will implement the second step social-emotional curriculum. And that goal was also met. In the next area identified by MDE, it states that all students in third grade will achieve grade-level literacy. We measured this through our NWA and MCA results. And I have to say that both goals, as you can see on the screen, second one, was not met for this school year. The third one, closing the achievement gap between student groups in the area of reading, the goal was met by American Indians, free and reduced, and two or more races, but not met in special education. See the scores on the screen? In the area mathematics, we are happy to say that the goal was met in all of the identified subgroups. Again, that is special education, American Indian, free and reduced, and two or more races, as identified on the screen. In the next identified area, all students career, are career in college ready. We met our goals of incorporating additional pathways in each of our academies. We want to again thank our community partners for their support in reaching this goal. They have supported us in these career academies and we have been able to incorporate additional pathways so that our students can benefit from these academies. We appreciate again the businesses that have helped us. And lastly, in the all-student graduated area, the graduation rate was not met for all 12th grade schools and was not met in the area of special ed. The goal was met, the graduation goal was met for our American Indian students, our free and reduced students, and specifically Bemidji High School, whose four-year graduation rate increased from 55.9 in the year 2018 to our current 84.4 in 2021. Pretty proud of that one. The slides. Lastly, I need to let you know that Bemidji area schools will be hosting a World's Best Workforce public meeting at 4:00 PM on Monday, November 29th in the district office if you would like to review or discuss any of these results again. So, questions or comments? Very quick summary. Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is first reading of revised SBR 400-30-7 graduation requirements.
Superintendent-
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Yep, I have to go back. Sorry. There we go. There's the motion. Okay. So, I need a motion to approve the World's Best Workforce summary for 2021, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kristi. Now, the next item on the agenda, Superintendent Olson.
All right. In line with what we heard tonight about the transition to, from a four-period to a five-period day, we do have to edit our graduation requirements. And that is specifically what we're talking about is just making some suggested changes for the class of 24, 25, 26, and 27. Just again, noting that change from the four-period to the five-period day. Again, not wanting to punish students for this. We want to make sure that we're equitable. So, those graduation credit requirements are changing each year as students have the opportunity to attain more credits with the five-period day. So, that was really the only substantive change to this policy. So, again, we are recommending to approve this policy as presented.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have no items this evening under relationships and collaboration. So, we move on to high-quality district. First item on the agenda is High School Activities Coordinator, and that would be Mr. Hickman.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. It's my great honor to recommend to you tonight Kristen McCray, who has accepted the position of High School Activities Coordinator. Ms. McCray has been a teacher with Bemidji area schools since September of 1992. She started in the AD position last week on November 14th and will have a base annual salary of $100,626, which will be prorated to the 165 days in the current fiscal year. I am recommending approval of Ms. McCray's appointment as our High School Activities Coordinator.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, Technology, Integration, and Systems Coordinator, Mr. Hickman.
Thank you. Let me increase my font here so I can read it. It is also my pleasure to recommend this evening the approval of Andrew Fuller, who has accepted the position of Technology and Integration Systems Coordinator. Mr. Fuller has been a computer network specialist with Bemidji area schools since 2020. He will start December 1st, 2022, and will have an annual base salary of $94,859, which will be prorated to the 152 days remaining in the fiscal year following his start date. I am honored to recommend and recommend approval of his appointment this evening.
Thank you. Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, first reading of revised SBR 900-80-1 Public Data Request. Superintendent Olson.
All right, thank you. We're going to notice here, we're going to have a whole series of policy changes. We're in that time of year right now where we're going through and updating our policies. So, please bear with me. There's several policies. Now, these are, many of these are not new policies. These are policies that are being revised. So, some of them have very simple revisions, but again, we are, we are following and corresponding with the MSBA policy review. And so, some of these policies are very minor and I'll walk through some of those changes. So, the, for this policy that we're going to be acting on right now on public data request, it reflects new language suggested by MSBA pertaining to public data requests, which add to existing policy, the responsibility to update by August 1st with changes to the procedures and requirement to have copies easily accessed by the public. So, this is basically to comply with the most recent statutes to make things a little easier for public data requests. And so, we are recommending these minor changes be reflected as a first reading of this policy.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I can second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. So, the, the second one, crisis management policy. This is revised SBR 900-10-3R. We're recommending to approve this. There's very minor, actually, I think it just, one of the changes is adding the purpose of this model. So, there's not any real substantive changes to this procedures. But again, wanting to stay current with the current MSBA. So, again, recommending to approve these minor changes in this existing policy as well.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Having, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next policy is on School Board Officers. Our existing policy outlines the responsibilities and duties of the Board Chair. This is an MSBA-required policy that outlines the duties of the Vice Chair, the Treasurer, and the Clerk as well. So just outlines those other responsibilities in policy. We have certainly been doing this in practice, but again, this just outlines it in policy. So this is a brand-new policy, but again, it is recommended by MSBA and is required, so I am recommending to approve this policy as presented.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next one is on open meeting, open and closed meeting law. This is something that is certainly spelled out in statute. This is a existing policy with, again, incredibly minor edits, basically to keep in line with MSBA policy review. I am recommending to approve again with minor edits.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next policy for your consideration is the first reading of SBR 100-10-6, which is School Board Meeting Minutes. This is a new policy, again, required by MSBA that outlines our minutes. Again, our practice is very good. This basically outlines our current practice into policy. Again, this is a new policy for your review.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the, we're getting close here. The next policy is Conflict of Interest for School Board Members. This is a new policy for, this is a new policy, although it has always been stated in our code of ethics for board members. This is a policy that is required by MSBA. We are recommending to approve this because it does comply with statute, and so therefore we're recommending to approve as presented.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the last, I promise, the last policy that we're going to be reviewing is the first reading of a revised SBR 200-10-15, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. And what this, this committee did is we put this back onto the Personnel Committee. We asked the Personnel Committee come up with ideas, suggestions for any edits or changes to the superintendent evaluation to reflect the current thoughts of the board and where we wanted to go. And so the Policy Committee did make some edits to our existing superintendent evaluation, and those are reflected in policy. And again, this is the work of the Personnel Committee, so I would ask for and recommend the approval of this policy.
Motion needed?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Was there a model MSBA policy that was looked at?
There was not one. So our, our policy actually has, contains the evaluation documents, so this is just updating our, our existing, our district policy to reflect that. This was, the Personnel Committee did look at some of the sample language from MSBA, incorporate some of that, but also we want to make sure that it's right for Bemidji, and so this was the Personnel's Committee's decision after we reviewed all that.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no items under Workforce Development this evening, so we will move right on to upcoming events.
Absolutely. So we have a couple of upcoming events. The next School Board Meeting is Monday, December 19th, 4:30 PM. I just want to reference that time is different because we, we also have a concert that we're trying to work around, and we also have a 6 o'clock Truth and Taxation, so by law, we can't hold that earlier, so we're going to start the School Board Meeting at 4:30, you know, roll into our Truth and Taxation at 6 o'clock, and then have everyone out for the concert, so you can enjoy the wonderful music programs that we have. And we also have some upcoming events that I will highlight in my superintendent report, although the student representatives already clearly outlined that, so thank you very much for that.
Okay. So next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Olson.
All right, so I wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, as we look at our board goals, rebuilding enrollment, I did want to report to the board that our October 2021 data compared to our October 2022 data shows that we are six students behind schedule from where we were last year at this time. So I just want to make sure I'm keeping you aware of what's happening with our enrollment, because obviously that's impactful to our school budget and so forth. So we are six students behind where we were last year at this time. Strategic planning, we just heard from MSBA about strategic planning. This is something that we are going to be committed to as we envision the kind of district we want to be and where we want to go. Compensatory aid, I'm very happy to give you yet another report on compensatory aid because last month I came to you and said it was going to be a $1.1 million increase from, from last year that will affect next year's budget. I'm happy to report that after MDE received additional information following their initial release of compensatory numbers, that increase will actually be $1.8 million. So I'm very happy to report that to the School Board. That will be reflected in next year's budget, so compensatory, whatever we do in one fall is reflective of the next budget year. I also want to make sure that people understand, though, that this is not mean that we're brought, we're still not in balance. So we're, this is not a structural balance. We've taken a $1.8 million increase for next year's budget, but I still believe that we'll be looking at being in the red next year based on that, although we will be talking about that in the spring as we start to look at the budget and so forth. Enhanced school security, we're reviewing our crisis plans. We still have a tabletop exercise to complete, and we'll be doing that, and we want to, we're continuing to be grateful for our collaboration with law enforcement and emergency services. From a teaching and learning standpoint, we are working on instructional strategy. I know Colleen has emphasized what we're doing and the direction we're going, and I'm really excited and appreciative of the direction that you're leading us in that regard. We're also starting with the principles, a book study called Focus, to start really focusing and looking at our instructional outcomes. I also wanted to highlight our community education program and some of the things that are going on there. We had some really great responses with our youth basketball, 260 students registered, 127 attending kickoff camp, so we're excited to see that. We also are seeing a large amount of interest in a variety of our aquatics programs, some of the zumba and some of those other classes that are going on. So our community ed is engaged in moving forward, so we're appreciative of that. At the elementary schools, our elementary schools held Veterans Day celebration in all of our elementary schools, and I would really like to reach out and thank American Legion, the Quilts of Valor, for their participation in these events. It was quite, quite moving, and I'm just appreciative to have those partnerships with our school district. At the secondary schools, we saw a tour of manufacturing that was held on October 18th and 19th. We had 117 VHS students and 91 Bemidji Middle School students attend this event, and I just wanted to thank several businesses for their help and support during this. NorTech Systems, North Central Door, Potlatch Delic, Bemidji Steel, Minnesota Innovation Initiative, the Idea Circle, Air Corps Aviation, and Bemidji Area Chamber of Commerce for putting that event on. So our students were able to go and out to these and learn a little bit about manufacturing. They spent some time with our students, and what a great opportunity for real-world experience for our students. And so I just wanted to recognize those businesses for, again, for their collaboration partnership with, with our school district. I also want to recognize Bemidji Music Department for putting on the band and choir concerts, and I'm really looking forward to the orchestra concert on November 29th. So if you don't have anything to do, come out for a great entertainment with our orchestra concert on November 29th. In addition, as the students highlighted as well, VHS Musical was on November 10th and 12th and had Little Shop of Horror, and I'm really excited to just see the direction that our arts are going there. And then we also wanted to emphasize that our new board members, we have two new board members that were in the special election, they'll be starting on December School Board Meeting because that was a special election. We also have the VHS Formal that will be held on December 3rd for grades 10 through 12, and just a couple of items I wanted to highlight, there are lumberjack pride items. Ms. Fraley and Dr. Stannick just presented the Bemidji Career Academies at the Minnesota School Counselors Association and the Minnesota Rural Education Association, so kudos to you guys and the work that you continue to do, and, you know, that work is getting noticed throughout the state, so I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Congratulations to the Boys Cross Country Team for advancing to the state meet. Also qualifying individually for the boys were Will Termonte and Carson Meish, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that last name right. We also had individuals from the Girls Cross Country Meet advance, Maya Hoffman and Reagan DeWitt. Academic performance, which is the last thing, I know this has gotten a little long here, but the academic performance of our school district, we were looking at how it performs to area schools, and when we did a comparison, we performed very well. We were tops in both math and reading with the area contiguous schools, and we were just barely got second, we almost made first, but just barely second in science. So I want to again appreciate all the staff and their good work and the continued good work here up at Bemidji area schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, once around the table, Cabinet. Anything to add? Okay, student reps? Okay, then we'll start with Mr. Haugen on the end.
Thank you, Carol. This is my last board meeting as a board member. As Dr. Olson has mentioned, my position being appointed and two new members coming on in the special election, I will no longer be here as a participating board member, at least following this meeting tonight. It's been a great honor to be here. I really have enjoyed every minute of this board work. I look forward to hopefully continuing to work with the district on the Enrollment Committee and working with Career Academies, two things that I support really strongly, and I look forward to continuing to work on that. This board and this cabinet has been through a very difficult period. There's no need to dwell on the past. We can't really accomplish anything now. We've all learned a lot. That darn pandemic taught us all a lot of lessons, and nobody came out smelling like a rose. We didn't go into it with the answers. We came out with a lot more answers than we had going in, and this cabinet, this board, this school district, its teachers, and all workers did a heck of a lot of work to make it all continue to work through the course of that pandemic. There's nothing to be gained by continuing to disagree about what happened during the pandemic. That's history. It's time to move on. We don't have time to dwell on the past. We have to rebuild our enrollment, as Dr. Olson just talked about. We have to continue to enhance school security. That's one of my big ones. I sure hope that the coming board will work on that. I assume they will. I'm sure they're all good and sensible people. And, and board priorities regarding mental health. I hope that the, the next board will work on that, but they'll make up their own minds about that. I just wanted to say thanks to this board for appointing me. It's been a great experience. I've really enjoyed it. I am really impressed by the cabinet that this school district has, and perhaps especially our superintendent. He is a great superintendent, and I've known quite a few in my time here in Bemidji, and we're doing good work, but we have to keep it up. We have to, we can't sit around and disagree or be negative about the past. There's a lot to do, and, and I really want to see this district start to build back that enrollment, to move past the disagreements that we've had, and, and get some things done, and start seeing those enrollment numbers go up and get the district back to good fiscal health, and then we can even perhaps do a better job on concentrating on some of the cool things that are happening in this district, like great academic performance, terrific opportunities for students and our kids, my kids, attend Bemidji School District. Savannah just finished last spring, and my daughter Giselle is still a student at Bemidji Middle School at this point. So I'm excited about the great academic opportunities here. That's why our kids go here. That's why we choose Bemidji School District, but also the, the great extracurricular activities from fine arts and performing arts to athletics, Career Academies especially, I think is just one of the exciting things that we didn't have when I was in high school. Kids didn't, you know, have the opportunity to look at anything except, you know, well, the opportunity to go to college, and college is important, but there are other things to consider for other kids. So I'm excited about what Bemidji School District does, and I, and I think this next board is going to do a great job. I'm sure that the people that work for Bemidji School District will continue to do the great job that they have been doing, and I look forward to working more with Bemidji School District in the future. Thank you once again to this board for appointing me.
Okay, Sarah.
Okay, well, I wrote some things down. It's not my last meeting, but I just decided to write some things down anyway. I want to take a moment to congratulate all the newly elected officials. Thanks to all who voted, and thank you to the people who have reached out since the election with texts, emails, and phone calls. Those messages and conversations have been touching, and I did really appreciate them. Thank you to Todd Haugen. It has been a pleasure to work with you on the board, and now that you're retired, I'm thinking that we'll probably see your name on the ballot maybe next go-around depending on, because you're going to have no restrictions, right? Since the election, I've heard two things. First, there's a large surplus downstate. Second, there is now a unified control of the three parts of government, the Governor's Office, the Minnesota House, and the Minnesota Senate. I am, like a lot of others, hopeful that this, that with this given unified leadership, education will receive money to assist with some of the priorities that have been discussed even this evening, like school safety, a continued focus on mental health, supports for students, teachers, and staff. However, my experience on the board has also taught me to never assume anything. Regardless of the funds that come down through the state, I hope that people will continue to keep the funding formula for transportation and the cross-subsidy for special education at the forefront of the discussions regarding the budget. That still is not fixed. It still hangs out there, and that's something that I learned as a board member, and I carry forward with me into the world now. When the state deems something a mandatory service, that service should have money behind it. We do that with our own personal budgets. In fact, we're talking about personal finance as a requirement for graduation. We did that tonight at the board. So shouldn't we ensure that the state must do the same with their priorities and funds? Okay? I know that I still have a solid month of duties to fulfill as a board member, but as I pivot from this position, I look forward to enjoying the rest of my son's senior year and attending all of his events and activities. I am very thankful to have had this opportunity to serve the district and meet so many wonderful people along the way.
Jeff?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Todd, for your time on the board. I've appreciated getting to know you and your opinions regarding the issues facing this district, and there are many. I want to say thank you to Dr. Stannick and his team for the monumental undertaking of, of changing from a four to five-period day, especially when you look at the fact that we're, we're gaining in a whole lot of areas, and we're really not giving up much at all. So I think that's just a really exciting...
So I think that's just really exciting that that has moved forward as well as it appears to be moving forward. So thank you and your team for all the work you've done on that. And I'd like to say congratulations to the new board members and look forward to seeing how things progress here in the next three, four years. That's all I got.
Anne?
A couple of things. I want to say I'm looking forward to attending the concerts and the music of the season. I love the music. I love the lights and just everybody being in the same space for a while. Just mentioning that there is, and I'll be heading up to Thief River tomorrow after work. Minnesota Service Co-op meeting tomorrow up in Thief River. It's a couple-hour drive up and a couple-hour drive back, so I'm hoping the roads are in decent shape for a change. And Todd, I wrote some stuff down, but I just really want to thank you for your service. It's just, it's been, it's been wonderful to have you on the board. And I know that I've heard you reflect all our kids and families and of our public school community. So thank you. Thank you for that. And I appreciate it, there's other, there's been lists of what you've focused on. And so I have heard, you know, obviously, your passion for public schools. I remember years ago, you brought that forward, and you've continued to push that agenda. And I really appreciate that. And, you know, one of the, a couple, we've made some large steps over your tenure here. So thank you. Thank you. You know, and also, also the support and the forward momentum for, you know, student achievement, continued increase in student achievement, and looking back over what Colleen has presented earlier and to try to figure out, you know, what we can do to help increase that now. The career academies and the opportunities for students to try different stuff out and to recognize that the community supports and the schools support different ways of working after high school graduation. And then hiring a great superintendent. I remember you had some fabulous questions of Jeremy when he was going through the application process. So thank you for those insights that he subsequently delivered. And then also supporting the student and the staff mental health initiatives and hiring of staff to further that along. So I am just honored to have served with you, and I truly appreciate getting to know you better and as a board member. So thank you. Thank you. I can't say that enough. Thank you.
Well, what can I add to that, Mr. Haugen?
Except to say that we've known each other for a great many years. And it has been an honor to have you on the board. And I think it's one of the best decisions we made to appoint you. And after 43 years in broadcasting, you certainly knew that you weren't able to be on the ballot. You didn't need anybody giving you the FCC rules because we all certainly were well aware of that. So that's why we looked to appoint you a few years back, and that didn't work out, but this time it did. So, and all the years on Chataboot and so supportive of our school district and then having, you know, different teachers and activity directors and everything supporting the schools. So we just appreciate that, and thanks for your time on the board. So, thank you. I wanted to, you know, go ahead.
So I'd be remiss if I didn't talk to you a little bit, Todd. I just want to thank you for everything. I know we've had a very short relationship here, since I've only been here since July. But I wanted to thank you for everything that you've done for me personally as a superintendent and the guidance you've given me. I know we've had several phone calls, and you've allowed me to bounce some ideas off of you, and you've given me very wise counsel, and I just appreciate everything that you've done. And just your personality, you've got that care, that passion for education, and I think that helped spur me on. So I'll just thank you for all the motivation that you gave me as a superintendent, the wisdom, the guidance, everything. I just, I appreciate it.
So I also wanted to just highlight those of us from the board who were able to attend the academic awards night just a couple of Thursdays ago here, where we recognized our high school students' high academic achievements. Holly and Nick were both in that, in that group of well over, well over 100 high school students who have really accepted the challenge of excelling in their academics. And so we congratulate both of you and all of the other students who were recognized that evening with academic letter or a patch or a pin, if you were first year, second year, and third year. So congratulations to you and all of the students for taking the opportunity to really excel in all the, all the experiences that BHS has to offer. So thank you for that. We also recognized the AP Scholars that evening as well. So I also went to the high school band concert, which was awesome. So my daughter and I attended, and of course, it brought back memories for her because she was in the music program during her years. So I've had, again, several MSBA Zoom calls and chair conversations, just, again, highlighting some of the things that the districts across the state are experiencing. There's going to be a school safety conference, December 5th, in St. Cloud. If you could talk about that, wouldn't mind attending that. Talking about meet and confer and how to make that maybe a little bit more reliable, getting people more involved in that. Talked about committee interests and looking at how we fill our committee duties here. That's another big part of being on the board. Again, it's another responsibility. You have to have reliable attendance, and you have to have an interest in each of those committees. So, and I have another Zoom conference call in the morning at 8:00. Let's see. Last weekend, I had the opportunity to participate in the MREA conference. That's the Minnesota Rural Education Association, three-day conference. That's an opportunity to network with other board members, staff, and administrators around the state. Sam Walseth is our kind of financial lobbyist, I guess I would call him. And he was very optimistic about the future with the funding. Optimistic but guarded, because we just don't know where that's going to go for the future of K-12 funding. There was much discussion, of course, on special ed and it being an unfunded mandate. And of course, with Bemidji, I brought up our transportation funding, which is always, always a concern, and that doesn't seem to get much attention, but maybe it will in the future. We'll see. So the idea of known mandates is, that's just obscure. That's not going to happen. So, anyway, we persevere. So, and I, again, wanted to thank everybody on the board for all the work that you have done this spring, especially when we went through the very public, public process of picking our new superintendent. So input from the whole community, and that was really appreciated. And for those who were interested enough to come and sit and be part of the process, we thank you for that. So, so, last thought, be thankful. Be thankful for friends. Be thankful for family. Your circle is unique. Those are the people who grow with you, the people who listen intently and support you unconditionally. And I have felt so much support from this community, and I'm very, very grateful. So thank you, community, for always being there for me and for recognizing that my commitment and my passion is to Bemidji area schools. And I will never waver from that. It's just too important. So, thank you. We have no public participation this evening. So next item is motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.